Committee.
Ish.
All right, well, I know you have a proposal, but we'll wait for the mayor to get here as he's right behind me.
No, no, but he's on his way.
Oh.
No.
He just pulled in though.
Hold it. All right, meeting adjourned. No. All right, so Jim's coming in, so you guys are gonna be on the hot seat in about thirty seconds.
I mean, it's do our stretching.
We're first meeting, you're right to the team.
Part of the team, Jimmy.
Right. He's been doing this habit. I wonder if he'll make two teams.
Is that going up?
They usually tell me stay out of the camera.
Sorry.
You guys tell me that.
We can fix that.
You can, you can stay wherever you're comfortable.
What's up, buddy?
How's it going?
How's everything? Don't know. You tell me.
Don't. Hello, everybody. We already.
It's like there's a meeting.
What did we do already? Uh, most of the agenda. Uh, that would be a talk, that would be a blessing.
Somebody put a motion on the floor for you to buy dinner tonight.
No, what we did is we consent, it's a consent agenda.
We did the pledge and I was just introducing the Cornwall and Hudson Pollinator Garden Crew, which is a subset of the.
C A C C.
C A C C.
Which Davis.
Holy Incorporated subsidiary.
C C A C. Which Davis, Davis Lee is on.
There you go. All right. The Cornwall Conservation Advisory Council.
Yes, yes.
All right, real quick, can I just, can you guys introduce yourselves? Oh, no, you.
Kate Grimskey.
Kate, okay.
Nicole Unstein.
Conner Staley.
Conner Staley, all right. All right, anybody else? Just you two? Okay, we're gonna do you guys at the top of the meeting, I promise. Um, apologies for being a few minutes late. Today is the second year anniversary of the emplacement of the Vivian, um, J. Terry, um, historical marker in front of the Cornwall Central School District Admin Building. Um, incredible story, Ms. Terry graduated from Cornwall and Hudson High School in nineteen oh three. The building, which is right across the street from the admin building, it's now an apartment building that she graduated in nineteen oh three, went on to Howard University and founded a sorority known as Alpha Kappa Alpha. So the sorority sisters have been coming here for the last couple of years to celebrate her time here, her involvement here in the community, um, and the fact that she is one of our favorite daughters. I mean, going back to, like I said, graduated in nineteen oh three, the village was founded in eighteen eighty-five. So we've been around for almost a hundred and forty years, she graduated high school here a hundred and twenty-one years ago, so quite a legacy. So they come and they do an annual cleaning of the marker, even though the marker's two years old and you could probably eat your meal off of it and, and be fine, but they, they clean it every time. So apologies for being late. Got an ambitious agenda tonight, um, but I know the first thing that we wanted to talk about, um, and doors were set here, we are live and it is streaming. Okay. Um, we wanted to talk about, um, the first portion of the Cornwall Pollinator Connector Trail. Now, the great news is, and your timing could not be more splendid, is the fact that of the four point five million dollar grant that the Cornwall, this town of Cornwall and the village of Cornwall and Hudson were awarded, um, I think one point change of that is gonna be dedicated to the Cornwall Pollinator Connector Trail. So what we wanted to do with a, with a small amount of seed money that we got through the Orange County Legislature and. Oh, that was a pretty good one, all right. Every now and then you stumble into a joke you don't even realize. Yeah, so, um, yeah. So one of the things we wanted to do with the four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollar grant we got through legislator Kevin Hines, who's our Orange County legislator, was to invest in, um, putting together a, to showcase what this was gonna be like. And we did it before, obviously, we knew that we, we won the money for the project, which is perfect, which was a discreet flower box, raised bed, um, and then along each side, um, pollinators, butterfly bushes, bee bushes, all the good stuff. You guys know all the flora and fauna around here and I don't wanna mangle the names of what we're looking to do. All right, just like with every government project, it went over time and over budget. So the original money that was budgeted to do it right, we knew it was gonna cost more money, we wanted to discreet raise the flower bed, because obviously this is the centerpiece, it's the village town line, we wanted it to be trimmed in bluestone, we wanted pavers around it, um, we just had to, we had to move and raise a sign. So if you're here to ask how much money is left in that original four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollar grant? Yeah. We exceeded that and then had to dip into contingency funds from our department, from our DPW to, to make sure that happens. I'm committed to a thousand dollars. Um, we will find the money, I spoke to DPW Superintendent Haverson this morning, um, we are committed to that. So, um, in fairness, because when I spoke to Dave Work about this early on and the village board discussed it, um, we were gonna try to do this project, four thousand dollars for the project and then a thousand dollars left over for the, uh, for the planting. So, you know, a thousand dollars to deal with how you decide to go do that. Um, it would be wonderful, it could be tied in with what our long-range plans are from Chudane Circle all the way down to the Lower Village and we're thinking the triangle where Hudson Street runs into Dock Hill Road, runs into Bayview, um, which is that little triangle there, that's kind of the, the connector trail as we laid it out to New York Ford in which we got the money, um, the grant money for. So whatever we do, and at this juncture, we've already built the, the structure, so, you know, anything we do beyond that is gonna probably be a new design and something aesthetically close to that, but as far as the plantings can go, I, I would leave that to you folks. And I'm happy to meet with you, I'm happy to meet with the other members of the Donahue Committee, because obviously Dave Work is kind of our capo di tutti capo, to use an Italian term, for the guy that kind of oversees all these things and then it just has to work with our, our DPW crews. They're the poor guys that have to go out there and mow around everything that we plant. So it's, 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 it's a lot more involved sometimes than people think and we plant daffodils, it's a great thing, but then you can't mow, you can't mow over them until they. Yeah, so anyhow, so any, anything you guys wanna add? I mean, I'm happy to, we can, we can meet offline on this during the week, anytime we can talk about it, maybe even go walk it and look at it, um, and then look at some different types of plants that you guys think about putting in there. But I would like this to be the showcase, that when we do bring a contractor in to do this full job and spend a million dollars to do it, um, that we have some consistency in it.
That makes good sense, we were looking at native pollinators, um, we got clearance through Dave to work with, uh, One Nature and Begin, they specialize in Hudson Valley. Pollinator plants, they made a bunch of recommendations around the plants they thought we should use, um, but Nicole went and checked out the site, she needs a landscape architect, and we have some concerns about the shale that's just under the surface and we can talk about that all offline, but it does mean making some adjustments, I think, to what we originally hoped to plant there, um.
Yeah, what kind of, what kind of plants are we talking about, just in general? Not that I have any.
Yeah, there, so there was some flowers, just some, some native flowers, like ebones and maybe the asters, things that you would see growing wild, um, maybe a service berry, we had a handful of plants that we were thinking of, but then that shale sort of complicated things and the time of the year since we planted a little bit later than we had hoped, um, there are some additional complications. But we have a plant list I can send you, um, and also that big kind of rocky hillside directly behind it.
That rocky hillside is what got hewn out when the road was put in, so that's what, that's what it, so when we drove, you know, when they put the original sign in, just trying to go down one or two feet, it's, it's jackhammer work.
Yeah.
I mean.
It was cut back from a.
No, it's not picks and shoves.
When they built the library there, that was cut back by a lot, by about twenty feet.
So here's my question for you too, is like, we, we all are a hundred percent on board with this, we love this, we, you know, we, obviously a quarter of the New York Ford money is going towards doing this between the village and the town, but we also have to, you know, work around the maintenance and upkeep of it. And so that's something we have to look at long-term. A, I've gotta figure out, my guys do the, the mowing by hand there, and then number two, what needs to be done, whatever type of plants we're, we're getting, what needs to be cut back in the fall, what needs to be trimmed back in the spring, you know? You probably, you know, the old keep it simple, stupid thing, because again, we're the ones that are gonna be doing it. I'm sure there'll be volunteers that'll come on board as well, but that's just something, a long-range thing, the least amount of maintenance and upkeep that we have to do, the better.
Is it, is it a possibility for, um, some type of raised bed there?
We have the raised bed, but that's where the sign is.
But I mean.
To do that, the, the cost of that would be.
Really? Raised beds expensive?
Well, to do it with the stone like we have.
Oh, no.
That, that was my question, I wanted to know what they, what they plan to do.
To border it.
Is it gonna be cobblestone, is it gonna be timber?
We didn't know right now how much money we had, so we were just talking about plants.
We don't know either, yeah, yeah.
But realistically, I think the good news is native plants are less upkeep than plants that are donated to the area, there's less weeding, there's less watering, but we'll be sensitive to what the site's natural conditions are. We're thinking immediately around the box, probably flowers, maybe some bushes, maybe some herbs that will sort of blend naturally with the surroundings, even if it's not.
Right now, we have that, uh.
We have a paver walkway.
Pavers around it, so what, what I'm, you know, are we gonna have something that we mow up to, we're not gonna have to worry about inside the flower bed? It's just gonna be a bed that we can weed whack around without damaging.
We can make it, I'm, I'm, I focus on a lot of like low maintenance, low cost, natural sort of, uh, installations that will make your life easier. We're not doing fine gardening, we're not, we're not doing man-eating. Yeah, yeah.
And you, and.
Georism.
Yeah, well, the other thing too is. Yeah, and, and, and like, have you seen where the, where the town line sign is? All right, so where that is, the purpose of having the bluestone on top was so that like, we have parades here, Memorial Day parade, July 1st parade, people sit on that. And then around that, you know, you've got the paver, so.
And that was smart, so that they're not trampling it.
They're not trampling it.
Wall, somebody's gonna sit on it. I've already seen teenagers hang out by it, so that was, that was the right call.
Okay. All right, so I think probably the next step would be for me and you two and maybe Dave, since you're our C C A C rep, um, and Dave Work to get together and kind of talk about what we can do and how we should do it. And again, I'm giving you a budget of a thousand dollars, so, um.
Can I, so I'm new to the local government, apologies.
Oh, so am I.
Does that thousand dollar represent just the purchase of plant material or does that represent labor associated with doing the digging? Like having the DPW crew participate in the site preparation?
Site preparation, I could probably twist the arm of the DPW superintendent to do, I had to answer before he did, I could probably twist his arm, but generally speaking, um, I'll use the one that we did there, the raised, the raised, uh, flower bed. Um, we have great landscapers here, um, folks that have companies and generally speaking, we buy the materials and they donate the labor. In something like this, where I wouldn't reach out to, to one of the landscaping companies, I'd probably see if we could get a group of volunteers and make it a, you know, and then we would just need strict guidance as, you know, don't go, don't do this, do this, do that, whatever, and do it that way. So yeah, I was thinking about it from the material perspective and then I would ask the DPW superintendent just to prep the site for you.
And we're happy to prep, like to, I'll be around for all of that supervision and guidance and make sure that we give, I know.
And, 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 and do we want to think about doing this now as we're running into the hottest phase of the year? Or do we wanna make this a fall planting? I know it's pushing it off and you guys have been patient and waited, but I, I'm okay with that, I'd rather get it right and knowing this. We don't, out front here, we have underground sprinkler system that take care of the front of village hall and then we have a hose here where we can come out of water. There's no water there, so the vincas, they handle that pretty good, because they don't need a lot of water, but anything else that we put in there, the first planting, we're gonna need to water it and that's not an easy fix.
Well, that's why we're trying to understand it.
Got it, got it.
How to make the most of what is.
So I'll give you what the expectations are, so once we go to contract on any of these New York Ford projects, once we sign a contract, that means the bids have gone out, New York State is looking over our shoulder the entire time, Department of State says, yes, you're good with this bid, you can, you can hire them. Once we ink the contract, the village board, the town council, we have two years to have a shovel put in the ground. To me, that sounds like an exceedingly long time and it ain't gonna be that long, because you got a lot of people around here that wanna make things happen yesterday. But what I'm saying is, we have time before this connector trail gets put in, I just want this to be the hood ornament, that people look at it, it's on the town-village line and say, look, this is what these, and they're called discreet stations, is what we're looking at. Put one here, there's areas where you can't do it, then you put another there, then you get to the park, there's another there, then you go a little ways away, another there. So discreet box stations like that, I just want this one to be the one that's, you know, that we can refer people to and say, the connector trail, it's gonna look like that. Yes, so I will defer to you guys, maybe we have that conversation offline with, uh, Dave Work and we talk about if we think we can do it now, I mean, the spring's essentially gone, but if we think we can do it now, okay, but if you wanna wait till the fall, I think that probably makes a lot more, more sense.
We love that, yeah.
Doesn't it?
Because we were worried about trying to sweep it in during.
It's just, and, and like you said, I have no, I have no water access, I'd have to have a water truck down there, I mean, there's, that's the only way to do it.
Go around outside the library to see if there was a spigot and how many feet of hose. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it gonna be one bed on one side or is it gonna be two beds, one on each side?
There's not much, when you're facing this sign, there wasn't much to the left of the sign, it seemed like up toward the, around where the library was a more likely area that we'd be planting.
I'm just curious, because.
Yeah, I think originally when we.
Size, so I can come up with my.
Originally, when, when Dave Work had sketched this, when Dave Work had sketched this out on a cocktail napkin for me, literally on a cocktail napkin, there was gonna be so many feet on either side, as Dave's talking about. We didn't think it could stretch all the way from where the rock outcropping is, all the way to the curb, but something, something inside of that, I don't know what, what, what is final, whether it was ten feet or fifteen.
I think it was like eight feet to the, to that telephone pole, maybe, I have, I have the sketch also.
Makes sense.
But yeah, there's a little area inside the planting.
Hey, where's our line to up to?
The sign.
To.
No, it doesn't, it goes, it actually goes past the sign. We couldn't put the sign on the line because the rock was too.
Yeah, it used to be on the line.
It got cheated a little bit.
Yeah, we, we couldn't, we couldn't drill in that part, so we actually had to adjust the line, so. All right, so is that, is that good? So you know how to get me, obviously, and you'll loop us in, I'll loop Dave in on it and I'll loop Dave Conrad in on it, we'll just have a little subcommittee, we'll talk about it. And giving us to the fall gives us time to plan this, you know the budget we're working with now? It also gives me an opportunity to try to dredge up some support, like with the C C A C, get some volunteers, the Children's Garden Club, the Cornwall Garden Club, get those people involved too, so we'll have the labor, um, just be a matter of having some direction. All right?
For kids on pickaxes.
Yes, thank you ladies, you're, 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 you can stay if you want to, but trust me, it's probably good to get out while the getting's good, yes. There you go, all right, nice meeting both of you, it's a pleasure. All right, moving on to the next item, which is monthly department reports. Um, I have to say, um, Megan, who is our deputy village clerk, but also works in the treasures department, she and Paula have been working together and doing a lot of, let me use another flower metaphor, cross pollination, um, to learn each other's jobs. Um, Megan is learning payroll, I don't think that has happened here in the village, um, for a long time. Paula knows it inside and out, but if Paula's sick or Paula's out or something like that, it becomes a thing where, you know, how do we get it done? And obviously payroll is the number one most important thing, paying our bills and paying our people. So they're doing some cross-training right now, which is going quite well, um, you can look at the numbers on here. Obviously, the ongoing training that, with Megan and Springbrook, um, night class interest as of, remember we put eight hundred thousand dollars of village money of unallocated fund balance into night class and the interest we recruit so far is seven thousand three hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-one cents. That is passive income for us, we don't have to do anything, it's making money. Um, so.
Let me just ask a question about that. So that's money that's not in the budget, not budgeted for, so what happens to that at the end of the year?
Rolls over into our fund balance.
As what, income?
Unallocated funds.
It's just, yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know if we give it a, if we give it a name, but it's just, interest just rolls into the un, unallocated available fund balance. Interest income.
Okay, just wondering.
Good question. Okay, um, and any other notes, any, any other questions or concerns in regards to this? All right, um, I spoke to Manny today and, um, just, and I want to say this because it's, it's good news, but, um, he had an illness in the family with his mother, she's doing much better and she's getting some, uh, she's getting some care. He flew down to Miami to be with his family, um, and to help her out, he will be back tomorrow. So before he goes on vacation, which is next week, where he'll be gone for two weeks, um, he will be back in tomorrow and Wednesday, Jimmy? Or Thursday?
He told me tomorrow night.
Tomorrow, and then I thought he said one other day, Wednesday or Thursday, but I'll con, I'll confirm. But, um, you can look at the report here, any questions? Um, obviously, we're moving forward with unmowed lawns, um, the ones that, um, I've asked Mr. Moore to go around and just give polite reminders to people, we're not looking to take people to court on the first warning, no, but to the ones that are the scuff laws, um, that is what we're, we're doing. So, um, violations are being prepared, summonses will be issued, um, you can see the numbers on here. Any questions?
Is it busy?
Yes.
Real busy?
Yes.
What hours do you work, Jim?
I just was from eleven to four on the opposite days of Manny, and then we work all Mondays together, so.
Okay.
Yeah. In regards to the lawn violations, um, have people been receptive to it? I know obviously some have not, because we have to.
I would say fifty-fifty.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Is it warm in here?
No.
No.
I know that I was outside in a suit and it was hot, but it, did you touch that thermostat? Look me in the eye.
No, I did not.
All right, then it's, then it's just me, all right.
It just stopped running.
It's, it's, you see? Okay.
It's half flash this, Jim.
They never talk to me, Chief, they never tell me, did you feel it? And then they wait till the, the sweat start to pour off me and then I know what they did. All right, May twenty twenty-four Fire Department Report, um, I'm gonna let you give a little dump on the insurance provider stuff, the stuff we talked about on, uh, uh, last week in regard to the, to the fire truck and options and where we're at with that.
So right now, we're at a standstill, um, we did get the initial estimate from V F I S of two hundred twenty-three thousand dollars to repair the rig. Um, that's all bodywork, painting, framework, um, some tires and springs. It is nothing for the motor, nothing for the transmission, it is nothing for the fire pump. We don't know if any of those are working right now. Um, the body that they proposed to put on it is a used body out of West Virginia, um, off the same type of.
West Virginia.
And they, they.
It's used for moonshot.
Um, but we've since found out, and I don't know if you've heard anything today, Mike, um, Mickey, uh, maybe he's telling us that it's eight inches too long for our rig. Um.
Too short.
Too short, too short, um, which is a problem, so it kind of puts the kibosh on that proposal, we're waiting to hear more.
Got it.
Um, we've gotten a proposal for two thousand dollars for a company to help us search for a replacement vehicle to take us the next two and a half years, um, to, to December twenty twenty-six, when our new pumper tanker is scheduled to arrive.
So, so Charlie, let me just ask you a question, so these are two viable options, two hundred twenty-three thousand, get it fixed, blah, 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 or lease, rent, um, are they separate options or? If we're gonna drop getting it fixed if we find something?
It, it's not so much, uh, as, as, so much as two different options, um, as, as much as figuring out the insurance company obligation to pay us.
Okay.
Um, if, if we were to choose to fix the old rig, um, the, the number of man-hours, um, the, the labor to do the repair is well over, um, thousand hours. Um, and the, the estimate from quality to do the repairs is actually a year, so that, that would leave us a year without.
Yeah.
A second due rig.
Not good. Who is V F I S, Charlie? Who are they?
It's our insurance carrier.
Oh, okay, okay, got you, okay. Got you, okay.
And that's done through the Rees Group, correct? Because the Rees Group handles the village and the fire.
And the estimates are being done through quality?
Um, they sent out, um, a third-party appraiser to come up with that number. Um, quality is helping us to assess that number.
Perfect.
All right, Chief, anything else on the, uh, Fire Department Report you wanna call attention to?
Uh, glad you asked.
Okay.
Um, first of all, thank you everyone for coming out to our inspection dinner, for those who had concerts to go to. Um, it, it was an opportunity to recognize the work that our volunteers do, um, and we gave a number of awards for that, but we were not able to give out one on Saturday, so we give it out tonight. It's the Meritorious Service Medal, also known as the Chief's Award. Uh, it's awarded for outstanding and distinguished service to the Fire Department. It shows initiative and capability further enhancing the operations and directly responsible for the betterment of the Fire Department. Those are not my words, I didn't string them together like that. Um. Sorry. Um. This will be the first time we're awarding it to somebody who's not a member of the company and is going to Commissioner Gianpolo.
Wow, all right.
Um, you know, the commission didn't exist until twenty twenty and it was another six months amending the law to figure out exactly who we wanted the commissioners to be, and another three months before the commissioners were appointed. Um, as far as we know, we're only one of two villages in New York State that has a fire commission. So these guys were handed no guidance whatsoever, because it just wasn't out there, they're, they're blazing a trail. Um, and Rick took on the responsibility of getting himself training, joined the Association of Fire Commissioners.
Fire districts?
Fire districts, which we're not, um, but that's where the fire commissioners hang out. Um, they, they're doing a different job than our commissioners are doing, but he's educating himself. And during his time with us, he helped us, um, improve our LoSAP plan, um, looking towards the future, getting a plan in place to, um, get our fleet back in service, back on schedule. He engages our junior line officers and he's working with them for them to be the future leaders, because we're not gonna do this for, for very much longer and looking to the future, ready, ready to deal with the headache of the new Russia regulations that are coming out. Um, and when he comes to us, it's usually not as a boss, but as somebody who's looking to support us and asking what can he do for the Fire Department? What, what is he, what do we, what do we need from him? So Commissioner Gianpolo.
All right.
All right.
Wow. Well done.
Very nice.
Thank you, Chief, very well done and, uh, and I can, I can vouch for the fact that, uh, being around at least, you know, since twenty twenty when, uh, the Fire Commission became a thing or when it was in its infancy in twenty nineteen and discussing it, and this guy has been an absolute asset, whether it's bouncing things off of him or volunteering to do things or just showing up just to make sure he knows what's going on, so that he can help where, where, where's needed and, Rick, we really appreciate it, thank you from the village board. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well done, Chief, well done. All right, anything else on the fireside? Hearing nothing, we'll move on to the police report, Chief, anything you wanna point out?
Um, just a couple of, uh, grants that we recently obtained, um, one is just for just under fifteen thousand from a New York State Law Enforcement Technology Grant, um, they're gonna be using this funding to purchase a card skin fingerprinting system. Uh, currently now, we have to go over to the town whenever we fingerprint a, a defendant. Um, by having it here, obviously, uh, it's an increase, it, uh, helps with the safety and security, without having to take prisoner, you know, from one point to another. Um, also officers will be able to have proficiency, since the, the, uh, program is here for their use. Um, we also got a grant from New York State Tracks, uh, New York State Police Tracks Grant Program. Um, so we, we got four brand-new computers, scanners, printers for each vehicle. And actually, uh, just, just as of last week, uh, last year, I put in for a grant for a new police car and it looks like it's coming to a head now and, uh, hopefully within the next month or so, um, for fifty-four thousand dollars from the state.
For a brand-new police car loaded with a police package, all the bells and whistles and.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Great, very good.
Chief, thank you also for, um, the assistance, uh, down for, at Riverfest, I know you had officers that were, um, you had four on at a time and I know there were a lot of overlapping shifts and making that all work. Um, I had a meeting with, uh, the town supervisor and with Chief Gebert and Chief Dixon, gosh, I don't even remember, was that Friday? On Friday thing, to discuss how we were gonna do coverage for camp, because I think the village is fairly committed that we will never have another summer camp that does not have an honored police officer there, we committed to this two years ago, um, and provided it, and then last year, um, our, our police officer kind of handled the town and the village camps, because they were conjoined, um, and so this year. Um, and so this year, we're working at the details now. We may provide the body and then the town may reimburse us for the part-time police officer to fill that shift because we might have the availability for it. I thought that was fair, Chief thought it was fair, and I think Josh and, uh, and Chief Gebert were both of the mindset that, that this could work. So, um, it looks like summer camp maybe conjoined again next year. And then the next year, a decision, um, which the village board and the town council at that time will have to make on whether or not this conjoined camp is a thing that we're gonna stick with or whether or not we're gonna go back to the way it was before. We go back to COH elementary school, they go back to, to Lee Road or whatever. But anyway, in the interim, we'll have two police officers. Why is that? Because one police officer will be at the facility and the other police officer, for the five days of camp, the kids, half the kids are walking to the pool, spending the day at the pool and then walking back. That police officer will be tasked to, to be with the kids that are on foot. So that any mass body of children will have an armed police officer. I've already explored, Chief's already explored, the Orange County Sheriff's Office cannot provide support for that. The school district, I've already auditioned them, they're not gonna pay for it or support it. So it is on us and I think we're doing the right thing by spending the money to make it happen. Oh, yeah. All right, Chief, anything else?
No, it's.
All right, moving on to Department of Public Works. Dave, also, thank you for your guys' help during River Fest. There was a lot of preparation of the riverfront for that as well as the trash pickup and clean up the next day. Um, I heard rave reviews about the pavilion from everybody and anybody that was down there. And Dave's guys handled some of the landscaping down there to kind of finish it off and finish the look-off for the, uh, you know, before we had our first big event, which was River Fest. So Dave, on the, uh, on your report, anything that jumps out and you need to brief the trustees on?
Well, obviously Mountain Road, Maple Road was redone thanks to, uh, Central Hudson.
Milled and paved.
Milled and paved. And, uh, our fleet maintenance vehicle is in service now and our front-end loader was delivered and hopefully that'll be in service soon, once we get the rest of the paperwork squared away. I think Paul has got everything now, so we're just, we're just waiting on getting that, but it's in-house.
And I think, and I don't think I'm, I'm spilling a secret here because Paul already said something to me about it, but do you want to mention that?
Yeah, I, yeah, I didn't, uh, I didn't say anything, I kept it under wraps and I brought it up here on Thursday and showed Paul. Uh, on the fenders of the fleet maintenance vehicle, we put, uh, in memory of James P. Sebastian.
Very nice, so it's on the, it's on the brand-new vehicle, it's a very, very nice touch, right? And it really moved Paula to, to, you know, emotion. And I thought it was a very, very nice touch for an employee who'd been with the village for, was it twenty-five years?
Just, he, he just turned fifty-five, he was just about eligible to retire, believe it or not.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I kept it under wraps, I showed Mike before anybody. And we didn't, uh.
And thank you for, um, patching Hudson Street black.
One, once again, we stepped outside the box and covered New York State DOT because there were some very hazardous potholes on Hudson Street.
Yeah. And you got to use the new hot box.
Yes, uh, the crew loves that thing. They, they, we're saving money, we're buying less blacktop and getting more done.
Excellent.
So, if that, if that makes any sense, but it, it does, they can, it stays hot.
Yep.
They don't have to worry about rushing.
Great. Very good.
What else?
Uh, other notes, Donahue Farm, uh, the kennel, the asbestos remediation has been completed.
Yep, I was down there today and I took a look at it. Deek and Dan Poindexter were down there and neither one of them even knew it happened. And then they looked up and they said, oh, we can see a portion of the, of the chimney had been taken off on the very top.
They took the asbestos liner out of the chimney.
Yep.
So that, that's done and we are scheduled for oil and chip of that roadway on July first. And I hope to be able to get the kennel down and out before that. I would like to get that done before the road.
It's gotta go on dumpsters?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Dave, I looked at it and walked it with, uh, with Deek and Dan Poindexter today and, um, there's really only about four or five hardwoods on the one side and then the, the locust tree, obviously in the front, there's a couple of trees in the front. But they understand that everything that the kennel cyclone fence is interwoven in on the inside and all that scrub, we're taking that down and just returning that to its natural state unless and until the, the Donahue Committee comes up with a plan for, you know, eventually putting a building back into that envelope. But we'll just return it to, to natural state there, clean it up.
Yeah, I'd like to try to get in there with the excavators and, and the roll-offs and stuff before we do the road.
Yeah, that's, that's what I told them and they're like, holy cow, you're talking about July first. And I said, that's Dave's plan. I gave you the drop dead of Oktoberfest and he's doing it much quicker than that. But Dave doesn't want to bring the heavy excavators in right after we oil and chip the road. Oh, and by the way, um, the area to be oil and chipped is all the way up to where the gravel is, up to the barn. Not all the way up to the barn, but I'll go down there with you. But where that road is, Deek said yes to that. So just as long as Dave Work is on board with that, that is what we'll do. We'll, we'll just do the portion because now with everybody parking in the old garden area and they, as you say, on the weekends now, there's, there's forty cars down there, fifty cars, people gardening.
Yeah, it's gotten big.
It's gotten big and popular, so, yeah. So, all right, all right, what else, Dave? Oh, and I didn't mention this, but I think I mentioned it, but it's on here. The low voltage lighting and the ceiling fans installed at the pavilion. If you have not seen that yet, you've got to go take a look at it, it's a very, very nice touch. Ceiling fans kind of move the air around, give you a feeling that it's cooler. And then the lights are inside, they're focused up, they're, they're low, low amperage so they, you know, they're not shining up into the sky. It's a very, very nice touch.
They're on tonight if you want to check them out on your way home. And actually, it, it does look really nice at night.
He's got to get to Village before it closes so he can get a couple of slices, so he doesn't have time to get to the river.
It doesn't spill up, it spills down.
Yeah.
All right. I, I gotta, um, are you done?
With this one?
No, I have some questions.
Oh, yeah, go.
So, so, um, after the contractors turned the roads, did they officially turn the roads back over to us at some point in time while we're negotiating the contract to, to do paving, i.e. Mountain Road, i.e. Maple? Like, is there a time where they say, okay, you're responsible for this road until, or is the contractor responsible to the road up until we make an agreement to get it paved? Who's responsible?
I'm not sure what, what, I'm not, I'm not.
Who's responsible for potholes on Mountain Road right now?
We are.
We are, why?
It's our road.
Yeah, but the contractor, isn't he responsible to maintain that road while?
They, they.
Are they, have they released the road?
They patched, they patched the road when they, when they did it originally. And once, once we have a settlement with them, we release them, once.
Okay, so they're released.
Once, once we have a signed settlement and.
Because somebody asked me that question. So, but during the time of excavation, so we're gonna go through this on, we're not gonna go through, but we'll, we will go through it when we do Maple. The contractor's responsible to main that, I mean, when I was responsible, I had to maintain the road on a nightly basis. So Mullen was technically supposed to maintain Mountain Road during the construction phase.
Gran, Granholm Construction.
Uh, Granholm.
Yes, and, and they actually did a pretty good job of maintaining. I mean, unfortunately, while they were doing that job, we also experienced.
I know.
The July nine storm, which.
Okay, but so once, now that we're in the flux right now, waiting to, we're paving it, right? Or, uh?
We're milling it and paving it.
Mountain Road is all patched.
Responsible.
Mountain Road is all patched.
Okay.
It's, it's patched up, we, we have some work that we have to do for FEMA, we have, uh, USDA work.
Because there was some whole stuff by Partridge?
They, we patched, I don't know when, when the last time, but we've, we spent several days up there patching.
Okay.
But, uh.
Because it was, it, it was dangerous, I mean, it was like, no one's down here.
But that's my whole thing. I mean, up until the point that they release it, like, say, just on basic nightly basis, they're supposed to make the road bearable during.
A lot of it wasn't their fault, though.
Okay, okay, okay. No, I, listen, I'm friends with Mike. I've known Mike for thirty years, so.
They were very receptive, anytime I called, they came out to care of any issues that we had. I, I, I had much better luck with them than I had any of the other contractors they had.
I'm glad to hear that, okay. Just a question, because I know we're in a flux period right now, so.
We're, we're.
By the, do we have a paving, um, you know, do we have a plan, I mean, or is that still in discussion?
Well, right now I'm looking to do it at the end of summer. But I want to try to knit in as much of the FEMA remediation work as I can before we.
Definitely. Okay, thanks, Dave.
And we're still working on getting all that stuff taken care of.
Which takes us into USDA and David asked me today, hey, have we signed the agreement and, with USDA? And I had, I had spoken to the board, I asked Doris to go back in the minutes. During a work session, you guys had said, yes, you can move ahead on that, but we didn't do a resolution allowing me to sign it, which is why that's on tap for tonight. So I spoke to the regional rep, Mr. Oscar Velez Huarbe, um, today. He's gonna set up a meeting, Doris, I think he was looking for, I'm sorry, Dave's probably gonna meet me and you. He's looking for a date time for us to be able to get on the calendar and talk to him about it. As I recall, we were talking about four hundred thousand dollars.
I think he wanted to do like a work session or a board meeting, so he could come and explain to the public what we're actually doing or what they're doing.
It's not a bad idea. That's not, I mean, if he's willing to come here, yeah, absolutely.
I believe that.
On some graphs. So, so, so remember, the, the USDA and FEMA projects, you can't piggyback on, you can't, so they have to be separate. That's where Mike and Dave have been looking at this, which one makes the most sense? Which one are we gonna get the biggest bang for the buck? Which one fits the mission of FEMA, mi- mission of USDA? So I want to say this is around four hundred and change, four forty, something like that. Remember, like everything else for these projects, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five split. So tonight, the only thing that we're gonna do is the board's gonna pass a resolution allowing me to sign the contract with them to proceed. I've already given them a verbal okay from the board, but they need this in writing, so tonight we'll just, we'll authorize that. Anything I'm missing on that?
So, so you guys know what we're talking about with that. The part of, part of that, there's three, three projects in that plan that we're going to accept. One project is the stream behind the homes on the Boulevard.
Yep.
That has filled in. That, it's a non-regulated stream with the DEC, so we can actually go in there and we can remove some of the sediment. So the funds will be available for that.
It's not considered an extra one, yeah?
It's a non-regulated stream. So we can do that, you, we checked with USDA, checked with, everybody's good with that. The second one is up on Mountain Road, we did a box covert about five or six years ago.
Yep.
And the wing walls have blown off of that and they're, they're gonna pay to have that put back to. And the other one is the Gavien Baskets that washed out just up the street on the left-hand side in front of, uh, Adamo's houses.
At the top of Mountain Road.
So they're gonna pick up the cost of repairing that.
So it's huge, huh?
Good, yeah.
So, we still got all the other projects with FEMA in the queue and we're still, I, I told Mike today, I'm still sending GPS coordinates and photos today.
I'm moving.
But it's, 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 it's a very tedious process going through this. Everybody, and you feel bad for people, especially like Mrs. McGinnis Adamo.
Yep, 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 yep.
We're, we're held, we can't do anything without the documents.
Yep.
We'll put the village on the hook for the money, you know, if it doesn't come through.
And the amount of coordination and work and the time, especially these guys have to go through because the government just doesn't hand you the money. It's, it's a process, it's like the New York Ford thing, it's, it takes a long time to, to get this to come through. It is, but thank you. All right, what else, Dave, anything else?
No, just like I said, we got many irons in the fire every day when you ask.
All right, Michael Water.
Um, let's see, you'll notice our water consumption's up a little bit last month. Um, not by much, about. Hundred thousand gallons a day.
Is that Wood Avenue?
Wood Avenue. It, you, you, okay, aside, it is irrigation systems because we have people, they, they get high water bills. We had a gentleman, um, we called him, said, hey, you're getting a high water bill, about twelve hundred dollars, you use seventy-seven thousand gallons. Yeah, I got a new irrigation system, new meters, it runs from two to five AM. And that's everybody's irrigation system, you know?
What your indoor pool that you have in the basement?
That's true.
Other than that, just, just normal.
Man, he said it was illegal.
And we did a bunch of training last, last month, so we got some stuff on the agenda tonight to discuss. Um, and just to, to piggyback off of Dave with that USDA, between that and FEMA, there's probably about two point two million dollars worth of funds coming back into the village for all the different water, D W projects.
That's great. Excellent.
Yeah, and, and Mike, do we have the Cedar Lane Angola Road? Do we have it on the other business? Yes, we do, we'll, we'll talk about that down there. Okay, got it, all right, moving along, New Windsor EMS. Um, I was on hand with, uh, the town supervisor and the town of New Windsor supervisor last week, I believe it was, when, um, Assemblyman Ikis, um, was able to bring back a hundred fifty thousand dollar grant to, um, to, uh, to New Windsor. So New Windsor's rocking, they've got, you know, they've got, um, a line of people looking to, to become, you know, to become volunteers or, or EMTs, um, and so they're doing a great job. And again, the, the thing that you care about the most is look at the average response times. I mean, they all tick around the six and five-minute mark every month. Um, look at the cross calls, meaning, you know, where they're doing mutual aid in different places. Um, and then look at the fact that they're covering a hundred percent of our calls. And across the last, let's see, we've, July first will be an official two years that will have, have contracted with them zero missed calls.
When does that come up, Jim?
Next year. So Josh and I.
Twenty-five at this time?
Yes. It's a three-year contract, so Josh and I have already begun discussing with Chief Big a sit-down to start talking about what's gonna be tweaked. I'm sure they're gonna ask for more money, I'm sure we're gonna try to hold the line. But, um, we have a great relationship with them, as you can see in Middletown, Newburgh, places that had to go with Empress or Mobile Life and, um, and, and paying these multimillion-dollar contracts out. Again, I get it, these are bigger cities, but, you know, for an outside contractor and we have, you know, we basically have a hometown, hometown ambulance service that just does the job, so. Anyway, but we will start negotiating that here soon and I'll certainly bring the board in on that and keep everybody in loop. Okay, that is it for monthly department reports. And let's begin with the resolutions. The first one is.
Make a motion to open up.
Special meetings.
Special meeting.
Second?
Yes.
On, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
All right. All right, so for this one, this is, this is pretty simple. Um, I'm submitting again for the, um, municipal tourism grant. I do it every year, when we get it, we have to sign a contract with them, the funds have to be spent by the end of the year. Um, and Doris, you have the language here for me, right? Um, I'm not gonna read all this, I'm gonna do this as per document. Okay, give me one second.
How?
Yeah, so, um. Essentially, the resolution says, resolve that, you know, the village of Cornwall and Hudson applied for financial assistance from the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation or the OPRHP under, um, the tourism grant programming. Um, we're authorized and directed to accept these grant funds in the amount not to exceed four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars for the project described, described in the grant application. Um, and that the Cornwall and Hudson, the village of Cornwall and Hudson is authorized and directed to agree the terms and conditions of the master contract with OPRHP for, for this project. So what I'm going to ask, I'm gonna make a motion that the mayor be authorized to execute this agreement for the funds with the, what is it called, the Yan, Doris, the?
Oil Park Recreation.
OCR, yes, whatever that, the O, OPRHP, um, as soon as possible. May I have a second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next one is the authorization to sign, I'm sorry, that was the OPRHP grant. Yeah, first one is a municipal grant, so.
The second one is the OP.
Got it, we just did that, so I'm gonna do the same thing, authorize the mayor, I'm gonna make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the municipal tourism grant. Um, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, again, that's four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, we have to spend it by the end of the year. Uh, when it comes to the tourism grant, uh, Trusty Brain had raised some, some ideas and I will allow him to, um, flesh that out for the board and talk about what we do for next year. Obviously, we have, um, a lot of departments, agencies, volunteer groups where the money could be well spent, but I'm gonna let Bill make that pitch to, to the board to see how we want to carve those funds up. It's not a lot of money, but it's still money, it's five grand, so. All right, next thing is the USDA authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement on Project Fifty dash sixty. That is the project for the village of Cornwall and Hudson as related to the July ninth, two thousand and twenty-three hyper-localized storm event. Um, I'd like to make that motion, may I have a second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, do we need to close the special? Alright, do we need to close the special meeting?
Motion to close the special meeting. I guess, okay, uh, any discussion, all in favor?
Okay, alright, moving on to other business. So, Michael, on the changes to the water billing, can you give a quick dump to everybody here? I know the trustees are aware of it, but kinda give them the, the nickel tour real quick of what we're doing and what the purpose of it is.
Certainly, so, um, you know, obviously in the water system, a lot, a lot of it is customer service. And listening to the customers, over the last few years, I think since the beginning of doing the, the postcard billing. Uh, we received a lot of complaints about postcards getting lost in the mail, people never getting them, they'd much rather have a full-size statement and whatnot, so. We've heard that and we're going to be transitioning away from the postcard type billing to a statement type billing. Um, that's gonna begin in July. Um, that will be mailed out by Orange Bank and Trust. Um, they will be printing the statements, they will be mailing the statements, they will be receiving the payments. When they receive the payments, they will be deposited that day into our bank account. Um, there's a post office box, so there's an address change for the remittance, it'll be a post office box in New Jersey. Um, but they, they check that post office box twice a day. Um, that's how come they can process the payments so quickly.
The residents can still come in and pay.
Yes.
Or ignore them like that.
No.
So i- is there a service charge from Orange County Trust?
No. No, the only thing we pay is for the postage.
Okay.
Um, and actually, we put some, we put some numbers to the cost of us continuing to do the. Do the postcards in-house versus them doing the statement billing out, you know, through their office. Um, it was, it was pennies. The difference for item, and it also gives us the ability, if we have flyers that we'd like to stuff in the, in the middle bills, we can mail them out to.
Yes.
So public, which we haven't been able to do. Um, we're gonna change the billing cycles, the town and village will be getting billed at the same time now. They won't be offset anymore and we're gonna be going to, um, odd. Odd-numbered months throughout the year for billing for both, this way, all six billing cycles will be. Built and received within the current fiscal year, so there won't be any that overlaps the fiscal year. Um, and then the hope is we're gonna start to transition also. For a new online bill payment format, um, that will allow people to pay directly from their bank accounts and whatnot and. It'll lessen some fees hopefully and encourage people to pay online rather than mailing in checks.
Kind of a no-brainer, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Alright.
Sounds great.
Alright, anything else, any other questions regarding, uh, water billing? Alright, moving on, building department fee schedule, obviously with the building inspector being out of district. Um, I wanted him to have a, you know, do a final once-over with the deputy mayor. Um, in regards to the few items that we were considering changing. And we've been through this before, it's related to accessory structures and what we charge per square foot. Um, residential new construction, what we charge per square foot, residential alterations, what we charge per square foot. Commercial new construction, what we charge per square foot, commercial alterations, what we charge per square foot, and then certificate of compliances. And Manny had made a recommendation on a number of these of what he thought was fair and appropriate. Keep in mind that most, not all municipalities, their building department is entirely funded by their fee schedule.
Right.
Ours is not. Um, a- and again, I don't think necessarily that that's, that, that you need to be net neutral there, that you need to charge enough. Fees to make sure that you can pay for code enforcement officers and materials and supplies and training and equipment and all the other stuff. Um, but they should be fairly consistent and close and ours are, I think we're right now running at about seventy-six percent, seventy-one percent, seventy-four percent. Seventy-six percent across the last couple of years, so I'm not looking to adjust these. Um, for any other reason, then, they appear to be out of whack, if you look at them across. The board with other municipalities, there are a number of them where Manny has shown me where the New York State Code said this is how it's to be calculated. And I don't think the board should be in a position to say, no, you can't do it that way, if that's the way he's calculating, even if it is. And here's the problem you have, you know, somebody lives on the borderline of the village or the town, they go, why is the town only charging me? This for this and this is this, and that's what happens.
This is what, when Joe McKay and I went through this with him, was it a year or two ago? This is exactly what he brought up, so.
Yeah, so I just want you to take a look at, I, I feel like, again, I always say with residents, we give them, if you can't, we can't give you everything.
Right.
But you give people small wins and on, on the, on the, you know, on the residential, um, you know. Alterations and the new builds, if we can adjust those slightly down, it's not gonna, it's not gonna put us in a position not being able to afford to put the lights on here at Village Hall. Um, and I think it gives somebody relief if they're building a, you know, a, a four thousand square foot or, you know. Whatever, how many square foot thousand, three, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand square foot house, um, it just gives them a little bit of breathing room, so. Jim, we're gonna have to put that off again, I hate to table it again, cuz I feel like it keeps happening, but in this instance, we'll give Manny time to get back. We'll do it at the next meeting, which is probably going to be the July, yeah, the July combined meeting. Okay, review of the tree law, now I've given this to you trustees and I know Dave knows it because Dave was. Part of the crew with the CCAC that actually, um, gave this to the town and the town has ratified this. Um, late this afternoon, I, I don't know trustees, if you saw your email and you saw Joe's comments in regards to it.
I was in communication with him.
Okay, so I would, so that I don't bore you then with the details, I would ask you to please take a look at this. I've asked Doris to put on the July calendar that we set a public hearing on this, so in the interim.
I think though, if you look at Joe's and I, I, I agree with him, I think that. Before you put it on the July calendar, give it to the planning board, just have them.
Do that first?
Yes.
Well, he suggested the, the code enforcement officer too.
Yes, exactly.
Code enforcement officer, alright, so then, so then we're not gonna be in a position to put it there, we can't.
No.
Because we're gonna make changes, we can't, we can't do public. So Doris, you're gonna strike that.
Yeah.
Alright.
Give him some time.
Okay.
At, at the end of the day, just so people understand, who are listening this, this is, this tree law is not applicable. To one and two.
Family residences.
I think that's the big.
That's what the fear is, is that you're gonna, I wanna take down this bush or I wanna take down this tree of my property and you're gonna tell me I can't. And that's not what this law is at all.
And no, it's never.
Commercial development.
That, that, commercial development, but it's also a commercial development that may lead to residential lots. Okay, so, um.
Good point.
So, but it's, yeah, it's the fear, believe me, it's the first thing I thought of, like, oh, okay, is this, is this applicable to single and, 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 uh. Two-family housing, that is a good thing, it's very, it's very broad.
It's very broad.
Very, very.
Way more broad than.
And the other thing, Joe brings up a good point and that is. This is, you keep going to the, the planning board for approval, there's no mention of the building inspector. So I agree with him, we were texting back and forth about this and that is, is that it should, it should go before, it's all aimed at. You have to go before the planning board, if you have to go before the planning board, you have to have this tree site approval. So Manny's not gonna, Manny's not gonna necessarily be involved with this.
No, he won't.
This is just going straight to the planning board in regards to, so some of this has to be tweaked in regards to.
But, by the same token, if Jimmy or Manny went out. And they had a building permit and they cleared that entire lot, they'd be in trouble.
Right.
I E.
But there's no need, the, the law uses the term permit, but, but they're not giving, Manny's not giving them a permit.
No.
So that's why it should be removed, it should be, it should be just approved. It's either approved or disapproved by, by the planning board.
So if we agree, um.
Well, I thought, these are minor.
Yeah, they're minor. Permit was meant, that permit, permit. Close quote, was meant for the planning, uh, was meant for the planning board, not for the buildings.
Okay, I think we just need to be clear, I think that's what Joe and I.
So what do we suggest then? Um, I give the, I give the board a week to look at, to look at Joe's tweaks. If you're good with them, if we're good with them, we send him to Joe and have him a- apply that to the town law. And then, and then make that our village law.
I say this, yes, have Joe make the changes that he, um, provided in his email.
And it'd probably be worth a conversation with Gabit too, just because, you know, Gabit tweaked and wrote in Cortez School.
Yeah, this is, this is more of just, it's just more of clarifying.
Yeah, it is, it's clarifying language, no, yeah, I didn't take it that way. I, I, I think for the common person to understand too, that all, so these things are. These things are secondary to say a project like Treetop where now you're talking about. The DEC having full charge of what's going on, not the planning board, when it comes to environmental stuff. Seeker and, and it's, this was for. Intermediate stuff, like you said, not the homeowner, a little bit bigger subdivision, we don't have that many properties, but it would protect. You know, maybe parts of the boulevard if something would happen there, things like.
I would say have McKay make his, um, draft changes. And then we send that to, we send it to the, uh, the planning board and give it to him. After McKay makes his fixes, give it to him with, with those fixes in it, give him thirty days to comment on it.
Yeah.
And we've got us to.
We should probably be in the room with Joe. Looking at all this.
You might end up be looking at, at September because.
I'm, I'm okay with that, I'd ra- I'd rather we get it right, I'm okay with that, and obviously Lieutenant General. Um, Rosoli is not getting to the planning board until July one, let him have a month or so to get his feet underneath of him and then say. Yeah, we're not, hurry for it because we, we don't.
We don't have that kind of development.
We don't have that property to fall on.
Good, very good.
Okay, alright, moving on, um, next item is garbage, garbage sewer fees and pool credit review. Um, I think we're in concert and, um, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, colleagues. But I think we're in concert that we have been giving a allowance for people to. Fill their pool up and not get charged sewer for that, it's just been, it's not in our code, it's not, there's no regulation, there's no law, there's no. There's no policy that allows that, it's just been done, and I think we're at a point where we don't need to do it anymore. Um, so we make a blanket policy because the people that don't know that it happens. They don't get the benefit of the people that have been around a while, go, oh, I always get that, I just call them and then they waive my sewer fees because, you know, it's going into my swimming pool. Yeah, but you don't give that to the people that water the hell out of their lawn, you know, also, you're not giving it, so why is it fair to do that? So if we're in agreement on that, we will make that, um, and is that something you think that we need to have? We don't need to make that part of code because it's not, we're not, we're not rescinding anything, so we just no longer honor, honor that. Plus, I think Mike made a good point, the last time you talked about it, about people already getting a sewer reduction, correct?
Well, they only pay eighty-five percent underwater consumption anyway.
Right, right, and just give everybody a little heads up, I think it's going to be, if not July, I think it's gonna be August. When we have that sewer meeting with the town and we decide to take a look at the sixty-seven and sixty-nine documents, cuz those are the only two documents. Related to, you know, an IMA or an agreement between the village and the town and Josh is looking at a lot of things, now I know he's put in. For a couple of, um, grant awards, which.
They get them.
I, I think there's a good chance, I know he put in for it through Congressman Ryan's office. And I, I believe one of them is like a one point three million dollar sewer project, Mike, that would be huge, obviously for the sewage treatment plant. Which is town property and their, their portion of that, so, um, anyway, so in regards to this. At the, and I'm not gonna be here that night, I will not be here on Monday, I will be out of town, the deputy mayor is going to be running the meeting. At the top of the meeting, there will be two proclamations and then you'll have a regular meeting, I'll keep it nice and streamlined, the two proclamations. One is for, for a boy scout that just became an Eagle Scout, you're gonna present that to him, and the second is to Wing Gold and the. Um, entire, uh, River Fest Committee, and just basically a proclamation thanking, you know. The Ferraris and thanking, um, you know, Wing Gold and then naming the committee members and doing a little history on, on River Fest. You'll do those, the meeting, but it's six o'clock, um, Dave is asked to speak, cuz there's a number. Regarding garbage and sewer fees, there are a number of deals with folks in the village that have been going on in perpetuity where people are. Underpaying by a factor of three or four, um, what they should be paying, I mean. It, you know, you have a single-family house on one side and then you have an apartment complex on the next, and the apartment complex is actually paying less than the single-family home is paid. Because it's always been this way, so we've gotta get that squared away, Dave, how many, did you say sixteen or so or twenty, how many did you say?
Over twenty-five.
Oh, no, that was, that was the, uh, there, there, there's two different, there's two different issues that we have to deal with.
Yep.
One, one is the, uh.
Garbage, right?
The, uh, snowbird.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So to speak, uh, fifty percent reduction when you're out of area. And then there's, uh, there's some senior discounts that have been applied, which there's nowhere in our code that allows that.
So who authorized?
Nowhere in our policy, I, I don't know, I don't do billing.
Yeah.
Um, and then there's a bunch of multifamily and commercial. That aren't in line with what they're actually registered as the county as, like a five-family or a ten-family. They're not lined up.
Hmm.
So I, I, I have, when I did the spreadsheet, uh, last time when I talked to you about it. Just on the commercial side, we were looking somewhere at about nine, nine to ten thousand dollars a year that we're missing out on.
Gifting, yeah, okay.
And then you have all the other.
Have that discussion at six o'clock, and it has to be an executive session, you're talking about individual. Um, have that discussion and then, um, Jim, maybe you can make a presentation and, and, and tell me. What you think and then if we've got board support, w- with it, we'll make that adjustment.
It's just something the board needs to look at and make a decision on how they wanna approach it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I always try to err in fundamental fairness, but I know that making a decision like this, there are gonna be a lot of unhappy people. Cuz if it affects them, they're gonna be unhappy about it.
That's, yeah, but the, the, the overall, the overall theme here though is that they can be unhappy, but. When everyone else finds out about it, they're gonna be unhappy because it's not fair.
We had to raise, we had to raise garbage rates this year.
Alright, so, okay.
Okay, alright, so that's that, um, the sewer, the manhole repairs, the, um, the benches. Um, we think that's gonna happen when now?
By the end of July. The contractor's been busy, tied up with some other stuff, especially with the weather and.
It's gonna be three locations in, um, in Homeland that have been identified as needing those. Um, okay, revised special events application, I'm just waiting really on Trustee Brain, he's gonna. Give us some, uh, some of his way in on that and send it out an email, you guys take a look at it, if you're good with it. I'll bring it to Doris, have her take a look at it, if she's good with it, then we will finally get this special events application, um, approved. And why are we calling, we're calling it special events, but actually it's like facility usages, but we're calling it special events because it's.
Facilities and special events.
Okay.
It could be either, I included in the pack, it's also the reservation form for the, the gazebo.
Okay, got it, got it.
As a point of reference.
Okay.
Farm roads.
Okay, alright, that's that, so Bill said he's gonna get that stuff out to us this week, take a look at it, um, and if anybody thinks anything can be tweaked on there, speak. Speak then or, or if you ever hold your peace, um, alright, next item. Um, this one, the term limits, extension of trustee terms and elected official salaries, I noticed if you looked at the agenda. For the town, I believe that it's on their agenda for extending, um. For extending terms for the supervisor, the town clerk and the receiver of taxes. Doing away with the receiver of taxes as an elected of, of position and converting it into an appointed position. Um, and then seeking term limits that if it is a four-year term for the supervisor. You're either only allowed to run for two or three consecutive and after that you have to leave office. Um, I'm gonna be interested to see how that.
Is this term two years?
His is two and theirs councils are four, yeah, and see, that's, that's what I had, and, and I don't know. You know, I'm hearing through the grapevine that there might be a, and I knew this was coming where, you know, after they lined up the town and the some cities. On even-year elections, um, that they're gonna come for the villages, it's going to happen, if there's fifteen hundred municipalities. Five hundred and sixty of them are villages, so we're just over one-third. They're gonna come for that, it's gonna happen, I, I, I believe that we need to fight that to the death, we need to fight. And that's hyperbole, by the way, in case anybody said, but I believe we, that's hyperbole, I believe we need to fight that hard because I just. I just, uh, I ju- just lining them up in November and the down ballot exhaustion and the conflation of. Of issues, it's a bad idea, but what, what I'm saying is, and I'm prefacing this by saying. I don't know maybe if we should tackle term limits right now, I, I am for term limits, but other people argue and say that term limits are elections. That you don't, you shouldn't artificially impose that, they're elections. If the people don't want you in, they're gonna vote you, they'll vote you out. Extension of the trustee terms. Again, I am vehemently opposed to extending the mayor's term. I don't believe it should be more than two years. I can see the efficacy and the the benefit of of trustee terms being four years. But do we tackle that now? That's my question.
Now, these uh require a referendum?
Those do. Now, these will also have to be, we can propose this for a ballot initiative. Now, to do it. And to get it on the ballot in March, is it required?
Yeah, I believe it is.
Believe it is.
Town too.
Yes.
So the people will speak.
Yes. Yeah, but in the village, if you get, let's say that we have a an election where you have, you know, a few hundred people show up.
I get it.
It's like, and and my thing too is, if you're gonna do it, you need to make the case and we need to get the support of it and we need to. You know, we would want to have a public hearing so that people had an opportunity to come in and speak and say. Uh, there are people that don't believe that positions should be any longer than two, no matter what. And there's people that think it doesn't make sense that you get elected. And you're immediately running.
Yeah, you're running.
And just going going back to going back to the um Senate and the Assembly trying to now push. Village elections, which is.
Shift them to November.
To November. I think uh most residents are concerned. They think we spend, you know, tens of thousands of dollars on an election.
Right.
So Doris, if you could, or or uh. Uh, Megan, is actually figure out what we pay each year.
I wanna say, we had Gene do that. I wanna say it's fifteen hundred dollars.
I know, was something, the number wasn't large. I remember it being like a thousand to two thousand dollars.
I thought it was fifteen.
Over the past five years.
Yeah.
That way people, that way people can see like, okay, we're not, we're not talking about a lot of money.
But the other argument becomes in turnout, but if you want people to to show up in large numbers just to vote straight party line. Or just to vote, then I get that. But having people show up to a village election where you're only voting for village. Politics and issues, it gets conflated. If you put it with a governor's race or you put it with a presidential race. So, so, but anyway, we're, we don't have a say on that other than who we like. We don't have a say on that. But I'm just thinking that for right now, um, the one thing that we can do, and again, I'd like to do this before I leave office is. I'd like to change the salary structure for the board. I just think it's time. Now, what I had Doris do. And Barbara for me was go back to nineteen seventies and, you know, I I don't think it applies at the sixties, fifties, forties, thirties. But go back to the seventies and let's look at what they, you know, what the pay, the pay schedule was. I will provide that to the trustees so you can see. Because your salary is made up of your board position as well as being a member of the Water Commission. So you all get. Part of it is for being on the board, the other is because you sit on, for lack of a better term, I know we're not supposed to use it, Mike, but a water authority. So um, that's where it comes from. But I'd like to make a an adjustment and a change upward um and do it. Before the next election, making it not going to affect until the next election. So, alright. Okay, so we'll leave that, we'll table right now the term limits and extension of trustees' terms. Um, just. Continue, do your own research on it, think about it, talk to people, see what your thoughts are. I would be amenable to pushing trustee terms being changed to four years. I think that's, that's an easy, easy one to sell and make sense of. Um, and I think people would not be against that, especially since it's been like that in the town for us. I talked to a bunch of people, they said as long as they've known, they've always been four-year terms in the.
Actually, that was uh three years, but I I.
Good, alright. Um, next thing, update on the C Y C lease agreement proposed public kayak rack. And I'm gonna turn it over to the deputy mayor who's been intimately engaged in the, in those um talks and doing some pro bono work. As he always does for the village and putting together an agreement principle.
So, so Jim and I um had a meeting with a couple of representatives from the, from the Cornwall Yacht Club. And we've met with them a few times. And there have been fruit uh uh fruitful meetings, let's put it that way. And um I had, and based upon our last meeting, which was about a month ago. Um, I put together an amendment to the amendment to the lease. They have it now. I've actually spoken to the uh the rep this morning. And um I'm gonna make some, he only brought up two or three tweaks to it, which I think we can agree to. Um, and then I'm gonna, I'll finish that out and give it and give it to them for them to take a look at again.
I think the important thing you said at the top was just so it doesn't get lost in anybody. We are not blowing the lease up.
Yeah.
We are not condemning the lease and then, I mean, this is an amended lease. So it's the original lease, it's just being amended.
Yeah, and and look, both sides have been very cooperative about um um since we've been meeting. I mean, initially when we started, got away a year and a half ago, things were going a little, a little sideways here and there, but I think um. We're both parties working in earnest. So we're gonna, we're gonna get there. Um, it's just gonna, it's gonna take a little bit more time. But it's on a good glide path at this point.
Agree a hundred percent. And I want to thank you for your work on that because. Once we get this agreement in principle and the yacht club representatives uh to add their tweaks and make it so it's amenable with it. I'll share it with the board. We'll send it to our attorney, they'll send it to their attorney. Then the meeting starts running, then they can both. You know, say, yep, this is good, this is clear for takeoff, and then we'll get a sign and we'll put it behind us and and move on to other things. Alright, thanks again on that, Jimmy. Jimmy, the kayak rack piece two, I know that we're.
That's all, yeah, I I've met with a couple of people who were um interested in in volunteering to work on that. And um I I told them, I said, look, just at this point, if we get part one, if we get the stuff done with the, with the um yacht club. Then it'll open up this for the kayak rack.
I can't tell you how many people come up to me unsolicited and say, when are we getting a public kayak rack?
Yeah.
We need a public kayak rack. And I'm like, I didn't know that there were that many people that, you know, that that was an important thing for them, but it is, there is a. Big group of folks that 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 want that. Okay, um, next thing, Michael, here we go. The update on Cedar Lane and Gola Road Water Main Project. So if you remember, was it last fall, Mike, that we got the grant from um? From um Congressman Ryan's office. Late last fall, we got an announcement. I want to say it was nine hundred and.
Nine fifty-nine.
Nine hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars um for the Cedar Lane and Gola Road Water Main Project. Now, there are sixty, there are sixty users up there, um.
Possible users.
Possible users up there.
About twenty-nine right now.
Twenty current ones, but forty of them that have their, they're either on wells or that they have their own water. Um, that we would try to bring online in this. So um last week, Michael, myself, Jason Pintagaro and his team. Josh, the town supervisor, and Joe McKay had a meeting here. The engineers laid out for us three different options. We looked at the three different options. And trust me when I say they were two or three pages filled with numbers and charts and graphs. Option number two was the option that we agreed as a collective was the way to go. Mike, you could probably explain. You know, Ricky, take what the different three options were and what direction we're gonna go.
So option one was to simply install a a new water main and that was it. And it would have been a response. Financial burden of all the the property owners to connect to it. Um, option two was we installed the new water main along with laterals and curb stops to the property line. For each of the homes up there. And then the homeowners are responsible financially to connect to the curb stops. Um, and option three would have been to install the water main, the laterals and everything right up to the house. Um, so we chose option two, um, because we think it's best that the property owners have some skin in the game as well. Um, we talked about some incentives to having it so that they could connect um now while the work is ongoing. At a lower cost than say in three years. Um, the idea would be to run laterals for each of the homes up there. And have them in place in case down the road anybody did want to connect, they could without having to dig the road up again.
So lateral, so the work, if they choose to onboard onto this, then we would end up doing the work to the lateral to their home?
Uh, they would have to pay the contractor. So what will happen?
When you're saying, when, no, I, the reason I'm asking, you were saying that, no, I get that, but you, Mike had mentioned at a low, at a lower rate.
Connection fee.
Cause if you wait till later and you got.
Okay, I I was envisioning.
Whereas it's gonna be laying there.
The engineer will, when he does, when they do the design, um, they will add in their price point for the contractor. Hey, you know, this is what the, we think the cost should be for connecting homes.
Got it, got it.
Anybody of those three that Mike just mentioned, does anybody see it any differently than than the way we collectively look at?
That's the way it would be done anywhere.
That's exactly, made, it made sense to us and hopefully we get more consumers online. Yeah. People that say, jump on and go, hey, this is a great opportunity. You're bringing the water to our curb. All we gotta do is. Pay the cost of getting from the curb into our house and we're on village water now.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's, it's a good thing. This will be a win-win. Mike says we're looking at spring twenty twenty-five.
Spring twenty twenty-five, that's the the target date right now for construction. Um, it's about thirty-one hundred feet, linear feet of eight-inch water main. Um, as we mentioned during the meeting, this is probably the first of its kind in quite some time where the village is expanding the water. The the water mains. Um, typically that would be done through a development and developers who pay for it. The village has never undertaken it themselves.
Yeah.
Except for first. Except for replacing existing.
Oh, what's the actual cost versus the uh the grant?
Um, there's enough money in the grant to pay for all three options estimated right now.
Pretty cool, right?
How many properties did you say?
Um, currently, there's like, I believe there's approximately six private water lines up that way.
Possible.
Um, that service about twenty homes. Currently, there's, we we identified about sixty properties. That are in that area that could potentially become customers. Um, I know we've had a couple of people with wells up there that have already reached out and they're looking for it. Um, there's some undeveloped land up there um that those people have reached out as well. They might be looking to develop. But they were, they were happy to hear.
Having water is big.
This is, this is, it's wonderful, wonderful development, so excellent. So obviously it's gonna take some time, but appreciate Mike's work on this and um. Our engineers and uh and our attorney and we'll keep you in the loop on this, but um we figured that option two is gonna be the way to go. This does not require resolution, doesn't require anything, just want to keep the board looped in that this is what our plans are. So it it cements the issue too that, you know, the the village water system though, you know, whatever projects need to be done, whether it's in the town or the village. That's where it goes. The water system is a separate entity. It's not the village budget. Okay, um, next thing. So tomorrow night, Josh is also going to speak about the Hometown Heroes Banner Program. I know there's been a number of people that have asked about it. If you drive through the village of Montgomery, if you drive through the town in the Windsor in certain spots.
Upstate.
Yeah, and oh, especially upstate. Um, you'll see these hometown heroes banners and um. One of the things that Josh and I both talked about is for the holidays, dressing up our our utility poles with electric. Um, with electric uh decorations. They would obviously have to be secular, so they would be things like a sleigh or. Or a snowflake or a candle or a, you know, there's a bunch of different things, a reindeer maybe, something like that.
And enough snowflakes.
But but um up, up and down, up and down uh, up and down. Hudson Street to Main Street. Um, so we'd also talked about doing this um for for um military personnel. So there was an article yesterday um in the paper about um Wapengers. And Wapengers just came up with this great plan, which I just went and I read it and it's like, answered a lot of the questions that I had. Cause every time you come up with something, say, this would be a great idea, then there's nine hundred things you have to think about and factor in.
Well, they must have got approved. They're central Hudson, so they must have got approval.
Yeah, so um they've, they've done it on the village of Montgomery, cause when Steve Brushel was the, was the mayor there and I went. Yeah, they um, they had done it. Um, and there's a bunch of different ways to do this. This is kind of wrapped into our New York Forward um project, the the Cornwall Connector Trail. Because we talked about streetscapes and we talked about, you know, doing things in utility poles and, you know, doing consistent, you know. Trash receptacles and benches and all these other things to kind of, you know, brighten up our two central business districts. So. Josh is gonna announce this. It makes the most sense because we talked about doing this separately and I was gonna do a program here and then he was gonna do a program up there. Makes no sense and we agree that we should do it together. He's going to take it on. So he's gonna take it on from the town perspective, looking at the village as part of the town. We'll obviously work closely with him and he and I talked about it today. We're gonna put together an exploratory committee, which will be the supervisor, the mayor. Um, the deputy mayor and Pete Karpeski from American Legion Post three fifty-three.
Is this all funded via the?
Now, so there's a bunch of different things that 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 are gonna factor into this. First of all, we would have to wait too long to get that money to do it. And we want to do this now. Josh's target goal in this, and I told him, I said, bud, that's ambitious, but I'm all for you. And I'll, and I'll bust my hump to get it done, Veterans Day. So by November eleventh and that. No, we're not, we don't need electrical hookups for that. We're just talking about banners.
Yeah, banners.
So, so the banners. The biggest issue in this is gonna be how you determine eligibility. Somebody raised their hand and says, well, I'm willing to kick in the five hundred dollars or whatever it costs for a banner, six hundred dollars or whatever.
Neighborhoods have done it with, where the families have bought the banners.
Right, right. And 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 that's okay, but we need to set, and this initial exploratory committee is not, really, as I told Josh. The legion should be at the front of this, deciding how it's done. Somebody like Captain Buca, who's a Medal of Honor recipient and lives in Cornwall, that guy should have one and we should have five or ten that are. That are, that are just, they, they don't pay for, the family doesn't pay for it. And if you're a Medal of Honor recipient or you're a distinguished service cross recipient, or you're K I A, or you were a P O W like. What's Ray's last name? Malon, you're somebody like that. You're a gold star mother or father. Um, there are certain people that we would say. You are at the top of the line of priority list. Then what is it? How do you determine? What if, what if somebody, do they have to have been a resident of the village and the town when they served? Or if they served, they were honorably discharged and then they moved to the village and the town? These are all things that have to be factored in. So that's what I'm saying when I say, there's a lot of work that needs to go into it. But I think it's a great idea. I think we need to have a selection process that is rigorous, um, with a lot of scrutiny over how they're selected. But again, that's gonna raise issues too, where somebody goes, well, why did so-and-so did and why not so-and-so, but we'll work, we'll, it's a good problem to have. So we have a plan in place. Walden Savings Bank had actually agreed to help support that, just because they're now our only neighborhood bank in the greater Cornwall area. Um, and they would support that. I don't know how many thousands of dollars, but there's a lot of monies that we have to get started. And as Josh says, what if we pick the first year to do sixteen? And we space them out, you know, start a shenanigans circle, space them out all the way down to the lower village. And, you know, go every eight poles or every six poles or whatever. I think it's a great idea. And off the top of our, my head. You can list like the first five or six that deserve them right off the bat where, you know, there's no scrutiny that needs to apply to a Medal of Honor recipient. Or a, or a prisoner war in the Korean conflict. I mean, those are, those are no brainers. Alright, so that's where that is. He's gonna talk about that tomorrow night and try to get that moved forward on on his town council. Um. The recreational trails grant um program award, um Doris and I've had um virtual meetings with them. Remember that is that, Doris, I'm trying to remember, what was the grant we got from them? What was the, what was the amount? Was it a hundred and ninety-four thousand? Something like that, two hundred thousand dollars? No, it was close to two hundred, maybe.
The Dock Hill Road Connector?
No, 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 the the recreational trails grant that we got, separate from New York Forward, the New York, the Dock Hill Road.
It was one forty-five. The O P O.
No, 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 no. The, we, we got the Dock Hill Road Connector Trail um seed money from the. It was the R T P award. And I want to say it was two hundred or two hundred and change. It's a different award. I'll get to the numbers later. But anyway, that money is gonna be applied on top of the New York Ford money. So we got almost seven hundred thousand dollars for Dock Hill Road. We now have an additional two hundred thousand dollars on top of that.
Match the two hundred thousand for this R T P, or is it just a straight, straight out?
Straight out grant. And the way that those grants work, it's great because I believe having that helped us to get the Dock Hill Road Connector Trail. Approved for New York Ford. They like to see you bundling grand awards, right? Cause I think when we we put it in for, we said it was gonna cost us one point three million dollars to do it the way we want to do it.
Two, two twenty-three.
Two hundred twenty-three thousand dollars. So that's on top of the seven hundred, seven hundred and change we got. So we're, we're talking about over nine hundred thousand. The village has to have some skin in the game, so I'd already, you know, we'd already, I think the board. When we submitted the application, said we were on the hook for seventy or eighty thousand dollars. We're gonna have a million dollars to do this project. Um, we have to get it right. Um, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be amazing, but we're coordinating with them, keeping everything on track. I'll keep you guys advised on where we go on this. We have not had a meeting yet with the Department of State for New York Ford. Which we can't do anything. We can't solicit bids. We obviously can't sign contracts, that's after that, or anything like that until we have the initial meeting. We obviously can't sign contracts, that's after that, or anything like that, until we have the initial meeting with them. I will let the board know when that meeting is set. I'm hoping it's within the next month. Um, because they're already, they've already rolled their sleeves up and they're knees deep right now in Highland Falls and in uh, in Montgomery. Cause I get a call from council members from both places, like, we're having our first public hearing, we're having our first uh local planning committee meeting. But so, New York State is heavily focused on that. But once they have that meeting with us, then obviously, Dave Work is gonna be a central figure in this. And I'll sit down with selected folks, obviously, on your two side and and the board and figure out how we wanna go forward with this. We're gonna have to, somebody come up with a plan for it and then we're gonna have to um put it out for bid. And then obviously, it's gonna have to be people that are allowed to do work here. And we want to do local, local or local. So we wanna keep this all home. We want this four point five million dollars to go right back into local. I'd say, when I say local, Orange County, um, contractors. And then it's gonna be wonderful. Alright, enough on that. Sculpture update. So, um, Dave, did you see my last email back and forth with uh Ms. Collins? So, we know we have the three locations that the board has approved. One is at Walden. The other one is at the triangle by Bayview, Dock Hill and Hudson Street. And the third, spoken to folks from the firehouse, the leadership or whatever, they're okay with it so long as, you know, it doesn't impact ingress and egress. And I've just asked Ms. Collins that the sculpture, which is the one that's on Bridge Street, that, that orange wood that's really skinny, that'd be put on a circular pedestal that's made out of wood. I think she has a couple of other ideas on how to do it. But I said, we're not pouring concrete there. Um, there are pavers underneath of that and this is a temporary loan. So when this loan is over, it all has to go out of there and it has to be returned to its original state, the way that it is. So, we're working on that. And I know you and Tommy are talking to her about when you think the um. The third, the, at the firehouse?
Yeah.
So you know where the seating area is out front? There's a circle of pavers right in the middle of that seating area. It's gonna go right as, and when I say a circle, it's probably a little bit bigger. It's a little bit bigger than the seal. So it's a, it's a pretty tight um paver circle and it's gonna go right on top of that. And then there's benches on one side and benches on the other side.
We're still waiting for her to get an agreement with Walden City.
Yeah, well, that's on, that's, that's, yeah, that's on, that's on them. Okay, um, so that's that. I'll keep the board in the loop on that. Um, and then the only other thing I have are FYIs. Look at this, only an hour and a half. Uh, June eleventh at six o'clock. So at six PM, um, Fire Commission meeting um in the village boardroom.
Alright, break you.
Good. Alright, June fourteenth, um, seven PM, movie on the Hudson, Donnie Memorial Park. Um, I am hoping to be there. I have another event that night with the county, but I'm hoping to be there. Jim, if I am not able to be there, are you around Friday night for Hamilton?
This Friday.
I'll be there.
This Friday night. As long as one of us are there.
Okay, yeah, I won't.
Okay. Cause, yeah, because they'll, they'll, they'll probably ask for, for one of us to say a few words. So a day before you're there. Alright, I'm gonna try to be there and see if I can work this out, but it's a timing issue.
Have the mayor do a pre-video that we can shut. There you go. He can speak to you in video. There you go.
Now, as embarrassing as that would be, that actually sounds fun. That would, I could actually dress like Hamilton.
No, he could wrap it.
Mike, I like that idea. Let's talk offline about that. That would be fun.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if she's got Hamilton. She has everything else. She's got Penelope Pigs, she's got Junior Pineapples, she's got an alligator, she's got this. I like that idea. Alright, let's talk about that. That's pretty cool. Alright, um, June eighteenth, seven o'clock, seven PM is the planning board meeting in the village boardroom. June twenty-fifth, now, make sure you get this straight, the primary election is gonna be here in the village boardroom. It is, and I know there's gonna be a number of people that woke up and think that they're gonna vote and they don't have this straight. Only the Democrat Party and the Conservative Parties have primaries. So those are the only, you have to be registered in those parties to be able to vote. In New York State, if you're in the Democrat Party and you're registered, you cannot.
You have regular polling hours all day?
Our polling hours are always now, whether it's village or whether it's run by the county, six AM to nine PM. So remember, Democrat Party, Conservative Parties, those are the only primaries. There's no GOP primary. Okay, um, and June twenty-sixth, six PM, Cornwall graduation at Cornwall High School. And I can't believe it, but I have a little one, our littlest one who's fourteen, is moving up to the high school next year. And it's hard to believe.
Outstanding.
Alright, um, let me go around the table for the board members and I'll start with, um, you were pretty chatty tonight. Why don't you let other people have a chance to talk? Alright, your floor is yours.
Um, I'm just gonna pass. I don't have anything to share.
Nothing going on? PTO wise? Well, what do you mean you have nothing to share? Didn't you have a little guy that just graduated from the elementary school?
I did.
Alright, well, that's something to share.
Wonderful event at COH as usual. Very busy down there, ending up the school year.
Now, will you continue to be PTO president or is that an annual job subject to reelection?
It's two years.
It's two. You have another year left?
Yes.
You wanna extend the term.
I already lost my beef.
Me and Kane both, yes.
Oh, no.
Oh, no. I, I don't see myself leaving. There's really nobody waiting to take that position. So I'll probably be there until I die.
Alright. At least until your littlest gets through, right?
Right, oh, yeah.
Alright, alright.
Four more years.
Alright. Alright, David?
Oh, yeah, just the, um, you know, that, that movie is a fundraiser or the Fourth of July, forgot to point that out. There will be food. The alcoholic uh uh waiver is in effect that night. So there will be beverages for sale and a food truck.
I did have a question for somebody the other day. Um, will we have police, uh, uh, nights that we have movies on the Hudson? We should probably think about, unless you already do, having an extra officer on. What are your thoughts on that?
Probably, I don't, I haven't budgeted for it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking because what happens if the officer that's down there, obviously, he gets a call and has to go somewhere else? Then we have no uniform law enforcement down there.
Yeah.
Chief, and, and I know that this is.
Last time, Steve? I don't know if we did.
I thought we did. Somebody said to me the other day, do you have coverage down there? And I'm like, when you put that many people together, I think we should. And, and any chance of maybe reaching out to the sheriff's office or the SP and seeing if, um, no?
No, we have to.
Alright, let's me and you talk offline because, um, and I know it's, it's late to do this, saying that this is Friday. But, um, see if there's any way that we could find somebody to do that and then I'll, I'll talk to the board about finding a way to pay for it. Because I know we didn't budget for, but you're only talking, Mike, how many movies this year?
There's three events down there this year. Maybe a fourth, we may fill one in, but that's it.
And then we have, we have Oktoberfest at the farm.
Farm and then.
One at the firehouse. So five total. Now, we normally have two guys on, or two officers on for Tuesday night bandstand. Like tomorrow night's a bandstand, right? If we do it for the bandstand, I mean, I'm just thinking, I mean, I know this is, we've been doing this for a couple of years now, but what are your thoughts?
No, we have to do it. There'll be more people in the bandstand.
There'll be a lot more people than the bandstand.
So.
We have the money to, to.
Yeah, yeah, I just, it's gonna be a schedule.
Yeah.
Look, this might have to be a pass this one. And the next one, we can prep for it, you know?
Can you take a look at it and, and give me a plan? Alright, I appreciate it, chief. Dave, sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay.
Just hit me.
No, I just, that's what.
But fundraiser, fundraiser on Friday, obviously, is for Fourth of July Committee. So, okay, excellent. Um, Jimmy?
All I have to say is, gonna, I'll repeat it next week, and that is, excellent, excellent, uh, Storm King Fire Department.
Oh, yeah, that was great.
Yeah, same storm with there. It was informal but classy. The food was great, the music was great. And the people, and the attendees were great. So it was, and the spot is just, it's just beautiful. It's a home run. So, I was ha, very happy to attend. Thank you for the.
Just had to rub it in, didn't you? We had Billy Joel tickets eight months ago. He sold out. This was show one forty-nine of his one hundred fifty residency. So he was next to the last one. And yes, it was like, it ended up being on the same night and I was like, I, I enjoy that too. Yeah, but watching this guy at seventy-five years old and has a six-year-old kid play piano, man, it was pretty impressive. Alright, um, any alibis, anything around the table from anybody? Nope, no alibis. I'll make a motion to close the work session. We have a second. All in favor? Alright, Doris, can you make sure to, or Dave?
Wow, that was quick.